Good afternoon. I will call to order the November 1st meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Magrino, Slack, Sweezy, Lukie Pierre, Breland, and Rockwell. At this time, I'll ask you to silence any mobile devices, and Commissioner Kronzer is just walking in as well. And we can get started with our meeting. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the October 17th meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we will sort the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items will be considered on the consent agenda and which items will be discussed. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item number one is North Market at 4414 Humboldt Avenue North, several applications for a commercial building addition there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? See, no one. We'll put item one on consent. Item two is at 12 through 18 West 15th Street, several applications for a new multifamily residential building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item two? See, no one. We will put that on consent. Item three is a zoning code text amendment related to allowing intentional communities. We will discuss item three. Item four is the Hennepin-Lindale-Lagoon-and-Lake pedestrian-oriented overlay rezoning study. We will also discuss item four. And finally, item five is the Lowry Hill East rezoning study, which we will also discuss. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one and two will be considered on consent. We will discuss items three, four, and five. Commissioners may have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we will consider the Committee the whole consent agenda. And Commissioner Slack, do you have a brief update?
We consider the number of items at the October 20th meeting. Thank you, President Brown. We had six items that we heard at the October 20th meeting. The first was a land sale for 3016 Knox Avenue North. The second was a land sale for 1008 Morgan Avenue North. The third was a series of land sales for the vacant house housing recycling program, and you can see the list of those addresses in this staff report. The fourth was a land sales for vacant housing recycling program. Again, a series of addresses listed in the staff report. And the fifth item was a series of land sales again for the vacant housing recycling program with addresses listed in the staff report. And then the last was modifications to the TIF plans for parcel C, UVB site, Phillips Park, and housing replacement districts. Motion was made for each individual item to approve the staff report that the item is consistent with Minneapolis' plan for sustainable growth.
All right. And I will take that as a motion to find that those six items are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda, that is, items one and two. Is anyone wishing to speak on items one or two? See, no one. I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. We will start with item three, which is a zoning code text amendment related to intentional communities. Staff, it's Ms. Hollein. And Commissioner Rockwell, I understand you had some questions about this. Is there anything you'd like to ask staff right away?
No, nothing specific, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
Just a brief overview of the intent, maybe.
Sure. Good evening, Commissioners. So, the amendment before you is a text amendment to several chapters of the zoning code related to allowing for intentional communities. The proposed amendment defines what an intentional community is, establishes specific development standards for that use, parking requirements for the use, and then makes it a permitted use in all districts where residential uses are allowed, and a conditional use in the industrial living overlay district where residential uses are conditional uses. The purpose of the amendment is essentially to add flexibility to the residential dwelling unit occupancy requirements in the zoning code. Per the definition, the zoning code, by allowing intentional communities, would allow for self-identifying groups of individuals who essentially function as a single housekeeping unit to exceed the residential occupancy dwelling unit standards in the zoning code. Currently, the city regulates occupancy both through the zoning code and the Housing Maintenance Code. So, in the zoning code, occupancy is regulated based on the relatedness of persons and the definition of family. And in the Housing Maintenance Code, occupancy is based on square footage of the dwelling unit and square footage of individual sleeping rooms. The occupancy regulations in the zoning code are not variable, so there aren't really a lot of opportunities for people to cohabitate who don't meet that definition of family. So, right now, occupancy in the lower-density districts is limited to one family plus two unrelated persons, and in the higher-density districts, it's one family plus four unrelated persons. So, again, looking at the two ways we regulate occupancy, in the zoning code, it's more to maintain the residential character of certain areas in the city, while in the Housing Maintenance Code, it's more of a life-safety issue, looking at the actual square footage and how many people can safely reside in a structure. So, with allowing intentional communities, the occupancy regulations in the Housing Maintenance Code would still stand, so the number of people who live in a dwelling unit as an intentional community couldn't exceed the Housing Maintenance Code, so there would still be that square-footage regulation. There is a companion amendment that's going forward along with this to Chapter 244 of the Housing Code that really contains kind of the nuts and bolts of this. It includes more information on, you know, if there's a violation, what happens, how does one register. It gets more into what the definition of an intentional community is and if you do or do not meet it. Again, it's more self-identifying groups of individuals who would go to housing staff and say, "We're an intentional community. We'd like to submit an affidavit as such." And then they basically get recorded that way, and when housing staff goes out, then they'll look at just the Housing Maintenance Code occupancy regulations, not the zoning code. So, that Chapter 244, again, a companion amendment, but because that's to the Housing Code, that one's not before you, but has been attached for reference tonight, and I think that's maybe where some of the questions lie, because really, the zoning code piece of this is fairly succinct. We're basically calling out to Chapter 244 and the specific development standards and referring to that Housing Code quite a bit, so.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know I came a bit late. I just wondered if you haven't, could you walk through some of the alternative policy options that were considered but not recommended in what's before us today?
Yes. So, this is something that's actually been on the text amendment work plan for several years. I came into this probably about two years ago, and in that time, we've looked at a couple of other options, one being changing the definition of family to allow a certain number of unrelated individuals to be a family. So, right now, we allow one family plus two unrelateds in the lower-density, one family plus four. There are several peer cities in the research in the staff report that allow for up to eight unrelated individuals to be considered a family, and that's something that's been upheld by federal courts as far as what they deem appropriate for basically allowing reasonable access to housing, is that magic number of eights. We also looked at just taking the definition of occupancy out of the zoning code. Minneapolis is pretty rare in that we have occupancy regulations in both the zoning code and the Housing Maintenance Code. Typically, cities that have a Housing Maintenance Code don't regulate occupancy in the zoning code because it's really more of a life-safety issue. And if it is in the zoning code, it's typically based on square footage or has a little more flexibility in that definition of family. So, we looked at both of those options, and in the end, you know, this is sponsored by two council members who wanted to proceed this way, but we did look at those two.
Okay. Are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, at this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak on item three? Yes, and please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Peter Brgerney, 3055 22 Avenue South. Sorry, a little bit out of breath, just had to ramp here. I just want to briefly speak about family. The law in its majestic equality allows both rich and poor alike to count domestic staff as family. That's a little riff on a quote you may have heard of, but I just think it's kind of funny that we can count staff among family members with no problem. I don't like that our definition of family essentially favors white, middle to upper-middle class heteronormative families. I don't think we need to define family in the zoning code at all. It's not a zoning issue, it's a life-safety issue, like staff said. So, that's just my one main thought, is that I think it just needs to go away. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Alex Chakini. I live at 3525 Fremont Avenue South. I'm here to support the general direction, but pushback, energy to pushback on it, has written. Quick anecdote, back in 2012, 79% of Minneapolis residents voted down the statewide voter ID legislation, and it was obvious how that requirement would negatively affect low-income populations, specifically people of color. Like voter ID, immigrants, college students, recent high school graduates looking for cheap shared housing, and individuals migrating from other parts of the country, there are just a few examples of people that probably wouldn't fit the limited definition of intentional communities, and they'd have trouble filling out the paperwork or getting it all straightened out. We know what'll happen. Many of these people simply won't do it. They'll either illegally occupy the space, risking eviction or fines, or they'll likely go to more expensive housing options somewhere else. This is a bad predictable outcome for populations that are historically underserved. It's also kind of solving a non-existent problem. I haven't seen any evidence that shows intentional communities having if you were parking, litter, noise, or other impacts to nearby residents. I haven't seen any evidence that landlords that have more than one intentional community or more than one group of people living together like this tend to be landlords or poorly maintain their property. So, I think if we want to view housing as a right in the city, we need to expand the definition of who's allowed to receive it beyond your standard nuclear families and intentional communities. So, let's just remove occupancy limits from the zoning code entirely and keep it in the building code as a health and safety issue where it belongs. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Dani Cloutier, and my address is 3030 39th Avenue South. And I just want to make a comment about the amendment as proposed as to the wording of intentional community. I believe that it is excluding different definitions of community, which include eco-village as far as tiny homes, which is a really big portion of the movement. Eco-village would include combined zoning with agriculture and residential, which is not included in the proposal. And tiny homes would not be one building, but a cluster of several. Also, I am a little concerned with the wording about the landlords only being able to own one, what is it called? Only able to use Tier One housing. As my partner and I have recently bought a duplex that had to have some work on it done in order for it to be compliant, I'm concerned that a hypothetical situation of a landlord having a Tier Two or Tier Three property and also demonstrating concrete progress towards making it a Tier One would not be able to have another property with an intentional community on it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Anton Schiefer. I live at 1727 3rd Street Northeast, and I'm here to support the proposed ordinance to allow intentional communities in Minneapolis. I think it's a one step towards legalizing housing options that are currently maybe being practiced but are maybe technically illegal under current zoning law. But I don't think the proposal goes far enough. I've actually lived in several houses that would probably be illegal in the past and hopefully will not be in the future, but I had no idea that, you know, five people living in a house would be, like, a five-bedroom house would be illegal. I certainly didn't check a zoning map before I signed a lease, so I lived in those houses to save on rent and with no intention of forming an intentional community. So, while I do support this change, I don't feel it's right that the city be involved in decisions relating to family. A more progressive and comprehensive step would be to reduce or eliminate the occupancy limits from the zoning code, as we already have a housing code which regulates housing occupancy. This would not only allow intentional communities to form, but would also legalize unrelated residents who live together in houses across our city. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on item three? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Calanti, and I live at 1721 University Avenue. And I live in a student housing cooperative, and we're interested in starting another co-op. Right now, we can't do that because of the housing codes, and so I think it's important to approve this measure to create more affordable housing for students at a time when student debt is so, so high. And it also increases neighborhood stability in areas that typically don't have that. When you have students who can own a house collectively instead of just renting from landlords, I think that really improves the quality of the neighborhood. And I also don't think this measure goes far enough. However, I think it's a really important step in the right direction that needs to be passed, because I think it would take a long time to, like, totally rework the Housing Maintenance Codes and stuff like that. So, I think it's a really important step that you could take right now to change things. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Katie Joan Schmidt, and I live at 2219 Bryant Avenue South. My perspective is a little bit more from the landlord's side. We had looked into purchasing a house next door, which had eight bedrooms in it, and otherwise wouldn't, and it was basically zoned to B. And we, as landlords, we couldn't have made the cash flow work because of the number of people who could live there, and so we couldn't purchase the property. Under this proposal, we would be able to purchase the property and go forward with that, and so I am therefore in favor and would encourage you to support it. The one thing that I find, the language that I am not in favor of, is the requirement for a notary for some of the paperwork, and I think that might be a little onerous for both the landlord and the potential tenants.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on item three? See, no one. At this time, I'll close the public, oh, yep, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
I'm Nick Manthe, and first off, thank you all for considering this ordinance. I am very much in support of it. I'm thinking about Seattle's occupancy limit of eight and Portland's of six. I view this proposal as a great first step before city council is comfortable raising the overall occupancy limit. And why this ordinance is most important to me has to do with what I think community is. I think community is about connection and networking, and where I see this ordinance making the difference is that I know there are a lot of houses in Minneapolis right now where there are a lot of people contributing to the creative spirit of the city, artists, musicians, writers, poets, and for those people to be able to come together and host events, say, like, a group of writers and musicians wants to say, "Hey, let's all come together tonight and make music together or write together or have an event at our house." They can't really do that publicly right now, and that's really unfortunate because it's already happening, but it's not the type of thing where houses that are trying to build community can put their events up on the internet and feel safe about that. And so, I think that's a really awesome thing that this ordinance is going to do, is it's going to allow a lot of houses of artists and creative types to be able to publicly share what they're doing and bring people together. So, I think it's really going to help our arts and creative community. The other thing is, I'm personally concerned that the ordinance doesn't go far enough. I think the limit of each landlord only being able to have one property is too limiting. I don't think there's a huge concern about the Steve Friendses of the city owning multiple thousands of properties misusing this ordinance. I think one is quite small. I'm even thinking that there's potential to have charity houses, for example, have an intentional community, and then rather having the excess money that would normally go to the profit of the landlord divert that towards, for example, supporting local causes, supporting charities. So, that's the type of, by only allowing each landlord to have one property, we're limiting really beneficial uses of the ordinance, like, for example, having multiple charity houses. So, my recommendation would be that we increase the limit from one to two or three, because I think overall, the risk of landlords owning thousands of properties and misusing this is pretty low. So, just want to say thank you very much for considering this proposal. We're super excited about it.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, please state your name and address.
Tom Pearson, 2205 Bloomington Avenue South. I'm speaking in favor of the proposed amendment. I've lived in Minneapolis for 18 years, and throughout that time, I've lived in a variety of different houses. Four of them, I would think, would be eligible for this status, and not having the status resulted in a feeling of instability in the house, difficulty of managing information and maintenance, and so on. And I could talk about my lived experience and why I think this would be important for several communities that already exist and practice intentional community living in the city. However, I would like to speak to you instead about some of the context of this from a policy perspective. In my daily work, I'm a researcher for cooperatives, and I serve on boards of directors for Shared Capital Cooperative, which is a community development financial institution that lends about $3 million to these types of housing cooperatives throughout the country, none of them in Minneapolis, and Riverton Community Housing, which is a local affordable housing provider for students, which intentionally in the '70s stopped trying to develop congregate living student co-ops, even though the financial and non-financial benefits exceeded our current model, which is apartment-style living. And I don't think Riverton will seek to start developing congregate student co-op housing now if this is passed, but I think it will allow for more housing to be developed organically in its own form. I think there are some reasons why this shouldn't go further at this time, and instead, we should take this approach and continue to improve it over time, and that a lot of the details that are difficult and challenging with this policy should really be tackled by the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee, where this is going next because of the nature of how the policy's managed. I think this is not a proposal to simply increase density or occupancy at the sake of livability or affordability, and so I think that's part of why it would be beneficial to do this. Another is because housing cooperatives, that specific form of housing, is more beneficial than other types of managed housing that includes more residents, and this came up in your committee of the whole discussion, why do this as opposed to simply increasing occupancy? This has been recognized by Nobel laureates such as Eleanor Ostrom, Joseph Stiglitz. They talk about why making decisions in a community setting is different than simply lifting the market cap, for instance, on the number of units. This is not just an issue of cramming more people in or allowing landlords another way to exploit the current housing stock. It would provide creative solutions for residents to come up with solutions on their own. Yeah, I hope you approve this today and pass it on to the Community Development Regulatory Services Committee. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? See, no one. I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, are there any further questions, or would someone like to start us off with a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the text amendments as proposed in Title 20 and the chapters and the text and the chapters indicated.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Breland, second by Slack. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
Quick discussion on this, and then I have subsequent resolution to propose, but I would offer an amendment to, in Section 520160, strike the word "maintenance," so that that sentence reads, "A group of two or more persons living together is a single household sharing in the management of resources and household expenses." I think about this practically, you know, if this is in a rental unit, I'm not sure what maintenance means or adds to that, and I have just a series of opinions here and elsewhere of just kind of cleaning this up to make it more practical. So, I would move an amendment that strikes maintenance.
All right. Commissioner Rockwell has moved an amendment striking the word "maintenance" from the definition of intentional community. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. We can make that amendment by voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, so we'll amend that definition. Going back to our original motion to approve the text amendment, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell, and then Commissioner Breland?
What?
All right. Commissioner Breland.
Really quick, there was some testimony about domestic servants being included. I believe that's the California definition of family, and I don't know, would staff read the definition of family that's in our current code? If you don't mind.
All right. So, the current definition of family is on page two of the staff report. It reads, "An individual or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, domestic partnership as defined in Chapter 142 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances or Adoption, including foster children and domestic staff employed on a full-time basis, living together as a permanent household." Do you want me to finish it?
Okay.
"The definition of family is established for purposes of preserving the character of residential neighborhoods by controlling population density, noise, disturbance, and traffic congestion, and shall not be applied so as to prevent the city from making reasonable accommodation where, if the city determines it necessary, to afford handicapped persons living together in a permanent household, equal access per the Federal Fair Housing Act."
So, I would draw a distinction between domestic staff and domestic servant, but certainly healthcare folks living with folks would be included. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Rockwell.
I'm not sure procedurally where the right place for this is. I wanted to offer up a, so maybe this question for Mr. Wittenberg, I wanted to offer a resolution which would amend, which would recommend amendments to Title 12, Chapter 244, which is not within our jurisdiction, but by passing what is within our jurisdiction, we are sort of incorporating that section and endorsing that section. Is now the right time to, it's not an amendment?
Commissioners, in terms of timing, you could handle that either prior to or after voting on the zoning code changes.
I'll see Commissioner Brown to decide when to do this.
I think it would be fair, after we vote on the zoning amendment, if there are any other suggestions we want to pass along to the city council, we can certainly do that. Perfect. Commissioner Bender and then Commissioner Magrino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe first a comment, which is, well, thanks for everyone for coming, and I know this has been many years, I think maybe eight years of discussion before this has come forward to this point, with lots of engagement with stakeholders across the city. I just wanted to note that I would be open to some of the other policy approaches that staff described, in particular, redefining the definition of family to allow more flexibility. Philosophically, I don't think that we should be one of the few cities in the country that regulates occupancy in our zoning code. I think that, like some of the speakers said, it's more appropriate to regulate the life safety of folks living within a building than it is to say, to try to control as a city who gets to live together and who doesn't. That said, given that the authors have worked very hard to bring something forward that they think is able to be supported now by policymakers, I'm willing to support this as an incremental step. I did, I was curious about what Commissioner Rockwell had planned to bring forward just before we vote on the underlying ordinance. I think maybe it would be helpful for most of us to hear that first, just since it might affect some of the discussion, so I would note that. Thank you.
Commissioner Rockwell, maybe you'd like to provide an overview of your suggestion.
Sure. So, you know, I guess this is framed by some thoughts I had. I also agree with what a lot of the speakers have discussed here, and, you know, I'm sort of frankly somewhat embarrassed to live in a city where we do regulate occupancy limits. I think it's a weird thing to do. I think we have a history in civil rights law of this not being a good idea, but I think that this is, as many people pointed out, a step in the right direction. It's not where I'd like to see us end up, but this is a step moving us in the right direction. And, you know, I was thinking about doing the math of my own life and realized I've lived more than half of my adult life in a, with more than three unrelated people, so I'm glad I wasn't living in Minneapolis when I was doing that. But it was the only thing that made my life affordable, and it also created a And it also created a market for three and four-bedroom units or homes other than families. And, you know, one thing that I have talked about in this commission before is that we, we are building a lot of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, and that doesn't provide space long-term for families. And yet we're limiting the market for those, for those units, I think, in, in what is an unreasonable way. And so I'm glad that this is, is coming forward to start to change that. And this issue also relates, you know, to things that are later on the agenda today in my mind, which is that this is about, you know, allowing more people to live in, in neighborhoods where there are access, there is access to, to amenities and to, to transit and to, you know, all of these things we need in our daily lives. And so we've got this excess capacity. In these cases, we're hearing from a landlord today and said, you know, I don't know how I would ever lease out an eight-unit, eight-bedroom building. And, and I think that, that's important. So all this is to say that I hope this is the first step in, in kind of moving us towards, towards demonstrating that these, these non-familial living arrangements are not a threat to the neighborhoods, not a threat to the city. And I'm confident, confident that'll occur. So, you know, as I stated earlier, I, our jurisdiction is really weird on this in that we, the planning commission, you know, recommends to the city council pieces in the zoning code, but not in the housing and maintenance code. And yet we are referring to the housing and maintenance code and this is all a package as a bill. So, so in talking with staff, which was very helpful, so thank you, I figured out how to put forward some suggestions. And so the suggestions are here as a, in the form of a resolution. And, and it is just basically some, these are what I think of as practical changes based in my own thinking about my own living in these, what I guess might have been intentional communities in some cases. And, and in talking to others. So I can kind of walk through this very briefly. The, the words that are struck out are, are intended to be deleted and those double underlined are intended to be added. So I'll just go through this very quickly. You know, I think the democratic governance piece in number two, I, I think there's a lot of ways households are run. And, and looking at Congress these days, democratic governance doesn't sound so great. I just, you know, I wonder if having a set of rules covering maintenance responsibilities, however those rules fit, might be better. In number three, I think putting an "or" instead of an "and" there, this is relating to, you know, what legal uses you, you have for the address. I know we're all supposed to change your driver's license within, you know, 60 days of moving to an address, but I've consistently not done that. And I know a lot of other people that don't. So, you know, I think having some sort of legal tied to the address. Number four is reflective of the fact that, you know, leases are, are year-long leases. And so asking people to sign like a two-year lease, which I don't think really exists, to, to be in a place for more than one year is, is practically odd. Number five, again, you know, different households run different ways. Then in D1, that was just essentially a language clarification. I don't think we see it on our screen anymore. I didn't really know what acting as separate rumors were, so I thought clarity made some sense. Number two addresses something one of the speakers spoke about. Sorry, this was a, do you want two pages? Can we release, you can put all of this on one? This goes over the page break. I didn't think about this. Can I look on yours? So this is, actually, I don't need to look at it. So this is actually addressing something one of the speakers talked about, which is, you know, whether a landlord can have more than one dwelling unit in which they have an ownership interest as an intentional community. And that to me seems overly restrictive in terms of thinking of what the market is. I understand why there is a, a restriction on the number of units in, in the context of this ordinance that a single landlord can have as intentional communities. But I think that, you know, I think if somebody's got thousands of units and they can only have one of those thousands, that's, that didn't make sense to me. So I suggested a percent. And then finally, I, at the bottom of page two, axed the notarized because we don't require notarization for our leases in these buildings. And I think it's odd to require several additional steps. We're already requiring one additional step to filing this paperwork, but I thought it was odd to require several. So anyway, nothing dramatic. And again, this is, this would be a non-binding suggestion to the city council. So I'm curious what my fellow commissioners' thoughts are.
Okay. Commissioner Lukey-Pierce?
Well, started, I really wish I had chapter 244 in front of me so I could be seeing what actually it says and doesn't say. But anyway, in, in reading through this really briefly here, I did have some questions. For your number C2, where you're striking democratic government, it seems governance, excuse me, it seems as though that speaks directly to D6 if I'm not mistaken in terms of, you know, who's providing the communication, who's in charge of it, who's in charge of dissolving it. That, in my mind, that, that kind of keeps it from being frittered away or not. And I don't know whether that was the intention of the definition of democratic governance, but it seems to me as if you're an intentional community, should decide if there's, you know, eight of us, who gets to decide someone gets kicked off the island or not, or how does that all? I mean, there should be something in place with people since in a family, you have no choice but to get along, but when it's a bunch of people living together, there should be something, some sort of thing discussed in terms of how things get divvied up. So I, I guess I would be inclined to keep it just because at the end of the day, if everyone scatters to the four winds, it'd be good to know who's, who's still there and who has the ability to add new people in and take people's names off and, and what have you. So I guess I would keep that because that's how I would interpret that unless it was somehow, I'm misinterpreting it. I do question number five. I, I do wonder, you know, and of course, I'm going worst-case scenario based on what I've seen in my neck of the woods, but it seems to me that in, in, the intention of mine, this is awesome. I have concerns about the potential to misuse it, which is why I like that there's some restrictions on it. It's not just loose and, you know, anyone should be able to live in it. Because I, I mean, there's a lot of overcrowding in, in certain areas of the city that it's, it actually takes advantage of, of people and I think it's horrible. And so I wonder here, not necessarily that everyone needs to pay for everything together, but I do wonder if, if all of a sudden we're saying, well, as long as you both, you all tip in for a pizza, it technically would meet that if we changed the "or." So I'm, I'm kind of wondering if there's a, a middle ground there to where you don't have to prove that you're divvying up everything, but that there's more than just a, for a bunch of people living together, you know, to exceed the maximum capacity that we can currently have, therefore, because we all order Domino's every Friday, we, we are an intentional community. So I, I don't know what the answer is to number five, but that would be my comment there. The D1, I do, I don't, I wish it was a differentiation of separate rumors. I think back to when I was a student and Dinkytown had roomy houses and you could rent a room. You know, whether or not that was official or allowed or not at the time, I have no idea. But, but it seems to me the sharing of common areas, that could be a laundry room in the basement, it could be a kitchen that everyone separately cooks at. It seems a little too vague to prevent that sort of situation from happening where it's a bunch of strangers that happen to live together versus people who are actually in an intentional community. And I didn't mean to define it by its very title, but anyway. So that's just a concern I have there. I do see what you say about having landlords only be allowed to have one dwelling, and I think that is awfully restrictive. I do wonder if there's a way to limit it maybe in a geographic separation factor though because people who have really large rental portfolios, I could see certain areas of the city having this getting really concentrated. And if all of the landlords in the area are concentrating it there, it might be overwhelming. Whereas if maybe it said that as a landlord, you're allowed up to 10% of your portfolio, but, you know, only X many within a half mile of each other, or whatever, something to that degree. And I, and I don't know off the top, since I just seen this now, what that number would be, but it might be a smart thing to do just so we're not inundating certain communities, which is intended to be good, but would easily quickly give this a bad name. And I, and so far, and that, that's all I have for feedback on this one. So, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Magrino and Commissioner Bender?
Because I just kind of had general comments, I would be fine with Commissioner Rockwell's resolution here and, and his changes as well. I think they deal with some of the concerns I had about the overall ordinance. I mean, I, I think like obviously this is fine. I, I don't think that anyone is opposed to letting 15 people live in a commune somewhere. I mean, that's, that's okay, but it's sort of, that's kind of uncomfortable though because we're sort of making a value judgment about different groups of people. And, you know, this is a lot of the language in here, which I think Commissioner Rockwell strikes, which is good, is designed to conjure up a certain kind of community. And it's just very odd that as a city in law, we would make that kind of judgment about different groups of people. But it was also written in a very loose way that if people wanted to take advantage of some of the holes in the ordinance, they could just do that, which, I don't know, that just, it seems very complicated from an enforcement standpoint. And it, there's just something uncomfortable about having people, you know, a lot of times this is going to be like 19-year-old college students, this is maybe their first experience with government, other than going to the DMV and have to like notarize their chore wheel downtown is just such an odd, like Kafkaesque thing for people to have to do. And it just, I don't know, it just makes me feel a little bit uncomfortable. Like obviously this is fine. We're all viewing as, viewing it as a step towards maybe eliminating the requirements on maximum occupancy and it's okay. I just sort of worry about some of the enforcement pieces here and maybe we're creating an odd thing that the city's doing. And it's, it's all just very complicated. And a lot of the times in legislation, that's, trying to make it complicated is not probably what we want to do, I would say.
Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm think, I'm glad that Commissioner Rockwell brought this language forward now because I do think it is important for this body to consider what we are doing by supporting the proposal as it is. I will say I'm very uncomfortable with a lot of this. I always have been. At CPC Cow, I voiced my concerns and, about this approach because I think it makes a lot of assumptions about who chooses to live together. And it makes assumptions that people who are living together because they can't afford an alternative or because they may be a certain age or maybe don't have a democratic governance structure or maintenance responsibilities, that those people, there's something bad about them, that we don't want them living in our communities, that they're louder, that they break rules. And we have rules in place. We have rules in place for problem properties. We have rules in place for trash in people's yards. We have rules in place for noise. I would submit that perhaps a family of eight related people with six children might be louder than a group of eight adults living together. Just as one example of why I think that the assumptions that underlie this approach are troubling and problematic. And I know we're all saying that we are supportive of this as one step forward, but I, I will just continue to register my concerns with this approach and its underlying assumptions. I think a more clean and simple approach would have been to take one that other cities have used, which is expanding the definition of family to include eight unrelated adults. Then we wouldn't have to sort of go through which of these many factors considered in determining whether a group operates as an intentional community as a city. If this does go forward from the planning commission, again, this is not something that would come through. This is the housing code. I guess I would advocate for simplifying this significantly so that it doesn't sort of add-on to what I consider the troubling and potentially exclusionary nature of this approach to amending our occupancy requirements. So I'm appreciative of the amendments. I'm supportive of them. I actually think I would go farther. I may suggest actually that all of number two doesn't really seem relevant to me, that I don't know why the city of Minneapolis government needs to regulate how people manage their chores inside their own homes. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Right. Commissioner Suizzi?
Mr. President, my concern about the resolution is that to support it means supporting everything in the amendment as proposed. And there are just a couple of things in addition to what Commissioner Lukey-Pierce said in section C parentheses three, the changing of "and" to "or." For me, that's a drafting issue. I think when you're listing things that are included-